Good evening. I am Deborah Metters and on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Martha's Vineyard, I would like to welcome you this evening to the candidates for the West Tisbury Select and to the viewing public of MVTV. Tonight, this is our first in the season of candidate forums this spring. Since 1920, the League of Women Voters, a nonpartisan political organization, has had as its mission to improve our systems of government and impact public policies through citizens' education and advocacy. And it is to that end that hosting forums such as this to inform the voter as she he prepares to cast a vote for a candidate for office or a ballot question. The League of Women Voters is strictly nonpartisan. It neither supports nor opposes candidates for office at any level of government. This year, in response to continued uncertainty about COVID restrictions, we have organized a virtual forum again this year. We have invited only candidates in contested races to speak to the voters in a safe environment. But we certainly hope that we can host all candidates in person in 2023. I think we all are looking forward to that. We have three candidates this evening, and they are James Kellensmith, Christopher Lyons, Jessica Miller. As we get started this evening, I would like to outline our virtual time together. First, we will begin by taking the candidates as their names will appear on your ballot at town election. Each candidate will have up to five minutes to share their views with voters in an opening statement. In an absence of a live audience, are the ability to utilize the chat function in Zoom. This evening, we do not have the opportunity to take live questions. So what we have done is we solicited via our two in newspapers, through our town columns for residents of West Tisbury to submit questions via email, which they have done. So we will be posing those questions. And then finally, the candidates will have a moment to present their closing remarks. And so with that, why don't we get started? Do, let me pause. Do any of the candidates have a question at this time about the outline? Okay, well, why don't we start again? We will follow your ballot. And Mr. Klingensmith, you are first on the ballot.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jim Klingensmith. It's James Klingensmith on the ballot. This is an exciting time. I'm glad to be here. I think that I wanted to just talk about my qualifications. I've served the community all my life. Public service, starting with the fire department in Eggetown. First EMT, first ambulance. Police officer in Tisbury, moved up to emergency management in Eggetown, which really helped me understand the workings of the town and various departments and how each has to work together to make the town run. Takes a lot of people to serve a community. Select persons, select board. Never served on that. I've been a finance advisory committee member in Oak Bluffs. I've been a personnel board member in Oak Bluffs and now in West Tisbury. My affordable housing committee in West Tisbury. Affordable housing, as everybody knows, we're in quite a crisis right now. That's one of the platforms or goals that I have is to continue to work with affordable housing. Try to provide housing for our workforce as well as aging population, which right now is about 20% over 65 in West Tisbury. It will grow to 35% in the very near future. So aging population, affordable housing, climate change. Climate change affects everything. And with emergency management background that I have, I'm very aware of the risk of wildfires in the community islandwide. I know that this afternoon, there was a climate change meeting for the town. We covered wildfire as one of the things that is a great concern for the community. West Tisbury not having fire hydrants is challenged. It's very difficult to get a lot of water to a fire, especially when it's a wildfire. I've been associate commissioner for the county, Dukes County, for elder affairs, and that made me an advocate for the aging population and helped me to get involved with the Center for Living, which I currently serve on the Board of Directors. I have an extensive background of public service. In the private sector, I have an extensive background of management. Some people may know me from the Harvard View and Kelly House hotels where I worked off and on for 20 years. I was on the executive committee running the hotel. That was another introduction to a huge budget, but not like the town is even larger. I had a couple of businesses over the years. One of my businesses, I grew to 43 people. I worked in New York and had a very large management position there that I learned a tremendous amount about working with people at all levels. I think that I, collaborating throughout the community for affordable housing is going to be one of the major aspects of moving forward and having any kind of hope of people letting their kids continue to live on Martha's Vineyard in West Tisbury. A lot of the people I went to high school with don't live here anymore. The ones that do, their kids can't live here. So we definitely have a problem that we need to work on. And I think I'll save the rest of the time for the other candidates.
Thank you. Next on the ballot will be Mr. Lyons.
Hi, my name is Chris Lyons, and I am running for the open seat here in West Tisbury on the select board. I want to thank the League of Women Voters for holding discussion. I want to thank Christie for hosting everyone and inviting us. And I want to thank Deb for the moderating. A little background on me, I spent the first 17 years of my life in New Jersey. Then I grew up, then I went to college in New Hampshire and attended Franklin Pierce University College where I studied sociology and theater. I moved to the island in the spring of 92 where I grew up here. I worked various odd jobs over the few first few seasons. And in the end of 93, the beginning of 1994, I became a road manager for local island favorite band End Train. I also worked the nightlife scene in Oak Bluffs as a bartender and bouncer at various clubs, where I learned the fine art of working on unique problems through listening and compromise, where only in those settings can certain things arise. In the fall of 97, I transitioned to the building trades and I started working for the next 22 years as a carpenter for some of the great island builders here on the island. I got engaged to my future wife Rachel and settled down in West Tisbury in 2007, where I still reside today at the same address. In 2017, while working at John Early Builders, I was approached by the Ag Society Martha's Vineyard to join the fair team as their fair carpenter. I built the fair from scratch in 2018 from guides from those who came before me. And by the fall of 2019, I was asked to join the Ag Society as the facilities manager and maintenance manager here, which I gladly accepted. In 2018, I was nominated as a town delegate for the Massachusetts State primaries, and I traveled to Worcester to cast our vote for my party's delegation. I've been an assessor on my road association for a bunch of years, as well as doing caretaking for a few houses here in West Tisbury. I find that both my past and my current experiences have given me many opportunities to navigate the needs of multiple groups of people, whether it's the band on the road, a homeowner's design needs, multiple layers of event coordinating, or just the stability of physical structures. Through the years as a carpenter, I was fortunate enough to work on some magnificent homes in some great locations, and I've seen parts of the island most visitors could only dream of. I also learned that there were building and zoning issues that affected the town that affected each town differently. And over the course of the years, I watched as the town struggled to face these challenges and how they addressed them. I remember the building moratorium. I've seen rules on trim color and height restrictions. I watched Chilmark adjust their building issues with the townwide Housing Size Bylaw that the Committee to Preserve West Tisbury has modeled their bylaw too. I believe the Preserve West Tisbury Bylaw is right on track to help address the size of new construction homes and additions in relation to their lot sizes and the surrounding community. And it also addresses the environmental impacts and pushes for more responsible and conscientious ways to build. This is one way we can affect the change in our town while keeping the small characteristics that we've grown to love here. I love the town and I love Lambert's Cove Beach. I think it's a great refuge for my pups, but I don't appreciate the random dogs that come running up to me in the parking lot in other parts of the town, which I hear the inevitable, "Don't worry, he's okay." That's great, but my dogs may not be. I almost never, save maybe one or two times, have seen a dog under complete voice control. Don't get me wrong, once on Lambert's Cove Beach and designated areas, my dogs are off to the races with all the others. I think a leash law in town could help with some unnecessary conflicts and vet bills in the designated leash-free areas. Another issue about our beaches is a bill proposed by our local representative, Dylan Fernandez and our state senator Julian Sire, that would eventually end private beach ownership in Massachusetts, thus making it legal for people on the beaches up to the high tide line. This, coupled with the land bank's purchase of land abutting Lambert's Cove Beach, is something our town needs to look at in regards to access and its restricted town use to be a proactive solution for our whole community instead of a reactive after the legislation gets passed. I'm a recovering alcoholic with 15 years of sobriety and counting. I have firsthand knowledge of the struggles of addiction, and I feel my personal experience has given me insight into the problems that we face here with the abuse of alcohol and illegal drugs. It needs to be addressed in the community by our community. And I hope that I can help steer our town in ways to support groups that encourage healthy lifestyles and sober living. My journey through the sobriety and my work at the Ag Society has given me so many opportunities to volunteer and has brought me immense joy as I get to meet and support so many members of our town and local community. I have some thoughts on the issues here in town, and I have certain feelings on some other topics. And I'm sure Deb will be asking me about a few of them later here this evening. But I don't think that is what the people really want to hear. I don't think that what I believe is the deciding factor in how I work on this board, because it's not about me and what I believe and my feelings. The people want to know if I'll listen to them and their thoughts and their feelings and their ideas. This position means that you, the townspeople, have selected me to represent you in helping steer the decisions of this town through discussions with you, my friends, my neighbors, my fellow West Tisburians, towards the most beneficial outcomes of our town. What I think is just a small fraction of what makes up our town and what should go into making the decisions. I have a few more comments, but I think I'm pretty good there, five minutes myself, Deb. So I'll save the rest of those for the end.
Hey, thank you. Now, Ms. Miller.
Yeah, Chris, you're a hard act to follow, my friend.
Thanks.
So my name is Jessica Miller, but a lot of people know me in town as Jessica Burt, because I was born, you know, B and raised up on Music Street. I went through the West Tisbury school system and then through the regional high school here, went on to college and then came back because it's such a great place to live and it's really where I'm connected. In 2000, I had a daughter and I raised her in West Tisbury, also through the West Tisbury school system and through the regional school system, regional high school, which I feel gives me a good perspective on how our school systems are working on the island. And they're, you know, they take a lot of money and it's important. And I'm interested in how that looks to a larger part of our community. I've worked professionally in all sorts of different things. You have very much the island way, restaurants, cooking, waitressing, carpentry, horses, agriculture, most recently. So currently, I'm working for, at the charter school in the kitchen. And before that, I was at Mermaid Farm and Dairy, working as a dairy creamery manager and cheesemaker. And before that, I was the counter, one of the counter ladies at 7A Foods, or counter people at 7A Foods, where I got to really interact with a broad spectrum of our community in a really fun way. It was fun to be able to, like Chris, you know, greet people in the morning and do part of what is important to me in West Tisbury, which is be a good neighbor and be a friendly human being and interact and invite people who you don't know to participate in your day. And that, to me, is part of the character of West Tisbury that I would like to keep trying to foster. We've all seen the island change drastically, you know, since I grew up through the 70s and my father grew up, you know, in the 30s. And before that, my grandfather and great-grandfather. There are changes that are inevitable, and a lot of change is good. But there are aspects of the island that I would like to see us try to steer our way back towards a little bit. And some of that is how our houses look and how our houses feel and the resources that our houses take up. Also, how we treat each other, that we take care of our seniors, that we take care of our children, that we take care of our natural resources. Part of why I'm on the Board of Health, so I'm up for reelection on the Board of Health as well, but part of why I started in on the Board of Health was to help address issues around the health of Tisbury Great Pond and our water systems here. We've been having issues with PFAS, both around the airport, but then it's cropping up in other areas. And I have concerns about the island water in general, partially due to PFAS, but also because of climate issues. Hmm, I'm not as prepared as Chris.
I'm sorry, Jess.
That's okay. No, I'm impressed. So one thing I would say is that serving on the Board of Health has given me some experience in serving on a board of three people, which is an interesting board because you don't have a board of five, you don't have a board of seven, it's three people. I feel like I would be a good component on a board of three, as I am on the Board of Health currently. It is really important to listen to more than one direction, more than one option. I want to hear from as many community members as possible and also from experts, from people, from scientists, from the people who know about finance, from the people who know about building code. I'm not going to pretend to know the answers. I can draw on the limited experience that I have, but I'd rather hear from other people and then help kind of pull out the threads to weave together to come out with a good solution. In terms of issues, affordable housing, top of everybody's list right now. I have to say, as a recipient of an affordable housing opportunity, I've had direct contact working through that system. It's incredibly difficult to navigate the windows, the income guidelines, qualifications, the paperwork, the making three years of tax returns come up with the right number to get you able to qualify, but then also be able to afford to get a mortgage. These are really difficult issues and there's not, it is not going to be a simple, single solution. It has to be a multi-pronged, dealing with seasonal housing, year-round housing, rental, affordable, different age brackets, families, single people. I feel like it's a massive undertaking and it's going to be very important to approach it from all directions. One thing around affordable housing that in my conversations with people I struggle with is the idea that Wes, basically, I want to see affordable housing opportunities in West Tisbury. I don't think we should be shipping all of our affordable housing to other towns. That we need to be able to provide affordable housing opportunities in West Tisbury for West Tisbury residents. And I'm not sure what that will look like, but that is something that's important to me. The other piece is, that's most of what's important to me. Affordable housing community, like Chris, with the, our version of the Big House Bylaw, keeping the homes that are being built here within the character of the town within reason. Not saying that every house that was built before 1900 needs to be restored exactly to a historical home, because they're not necessarily historical. But keeping the house sizes correct, in my approximation, correct for the size of the lot and for the character of the communities. And also, that affects our environmental impact. And so that's another place where keeping houses small, we should be using less. We should not be using more. We should be building smaller. We should be building better. And then being thoughtful about our wastewater and our wells and agriculture and how agriculture affects the ponds. And now I'm rambling, and I think my time is probably also up. So thank you very much.
Okay, well, thank the three of you for those introductory remarks and such. And now that we've heard from each of the candidates, who they are and what their priorities are and why you should vote for her or him, we will now go into our next phase. We, as remarked earlier, we solicited questions from actually the public. And the questions that we did receive came, all came from West Tisbury residents. So they're going to be from your neighbors. And so we will now go through these questions. But again, they are from residents of West Tisbury rather than the League of Women Voters. Beginning with the first, and we will go ahead and reverse the order and start with you, Ms. Miller. There's a bit of an intro to this. So I will read it verbatim. "Select board members around the island have demonstrated their ability to respond to issues raised by their constituents. However, with major problems in front of us ranging from high school cost to housing to climate change, this West Tisbury resident has seen little evidence of strong proactive leadership in the sense of taking a bull by the horns. How will you proactively move the needle on the big issues we face?" And I'll start with, "And what is your position on the formula for funding the high school repairs?" Ms. Miller.
So the high school, I know Jim Malkin and Chilmark proposed an even split amongst the towns. I think that's a great icebreaker. I don't think that's the end answer. I don't feel like that's the final answer. Our town by town, our tax bases are very different and our tax rates are very different. I think it's unfair to burden the down-island towns which have lower real estate tax values, not Eggetown, but OB and Vineyard Haven, at higher tax rates. So in terms of the high school, I think it's a complex issue. I know that, I believe that the commission is funded through a different formulation and that takes into account the values of real estate in different towns and the tax rates. And I think we should be considering layering multiple ideas together, that it's not reasonable to do an even split. And I would like to see the towns with greater tax bases step up to help Oak Bluffs manage a lot of, they provide a lot for all of us. And I'd like to see our towns, you know, kicking in, kicking into that.
Are there any other big issues, Ms. Miller, in the town of West Tisbury that you would take proactive leadership?
Affordable housing, and I think, you know, I did recently sit in on an affordable housing meeting. People are taking steps. And one of the issues I see in town is that the town actually owns limited property. And so, and they slowly but surely develop them or have, in my case, you know, did an affordable home site lottery. I think the town needs to look to other options, either buy, you know, and hopefully, if the housing bank is formed, will help fuel this, looking into the town purchasing existing properties and, you know, renovating or repurposing or re, you know, adjusting zoning to turn homes into multi-family dwellings. Relying only on the town developing town-owned properties is not going to be enough. It's not going to be enough in time. So I would like to see us move towards purchasing existing buildings, not building new buildings, and using those buildings for a better purpose.
Thank you. Mr. Lyons. Again, this resident there in West Tisbury has seen little evidence of strong proactive leadership in the sense of taking a bull by the horns. How will you proactively move the needle on big issues that you face there in West Tisbury? Beginning with your position on the formula for funding the high school repairs.
Well, funding the high school, the high school, I believe that the high school is used by all of us. So we should definitely all be involved in helping fund that. That said, I do believe an unnecessarily, an unnecessary high burden falls on the town of Oak Bluffs. I also think that the formula should be broken up a little differently. Having it based evenly spread across all six towns is definitely not fair. The tax base probably would help a little bit more. I know Chilmark and Eggetown maybe have more of a higher tax base, and it hasn't really been tapped too much, that I think would probably help out a little more. It's unfair to ask individual towns to take a strong burden. Our big thing here is we're six towns with one island that we all live on, and we have to somehow try to all be together and work together towards a solution. I'm not completely sure of what the answer is. As Jess said, I think that other towns need to step up and maybe pay a little bit more, even though they don't have as many kids in the school. They may have to, their tax base may have to take a little bit more of a hit because, long and short of it, is none of us want to have uneducated children moving forward. And as the children, to quote one singer, "The children are our future", I think we all want to try and help that as best we can. So we should all try and do as much possible towards that. I also think that reaching out across town lines to other selectmen and find out what their thoughts and their feelings are and how we can share with them and work with them. I'm not quite sure that there's enough reaching out to the other towns to see what they want and how they feel and how we could help in West Tisbury.
Is there another or other issues there in West Tisbury specifically that you would take a strong proactive leadership role?
Um, well, again, yo, I think we're all kind of stuck in those same issues because we all face the same thing on this island. The housing bank, and I think that's a fantastic, fantastic start on something. There's a huge housing crisis on this island. And I don't think that being six separate towns, trying to find six separate solutions to them, is going to be the answer. I've read recently and I've heard some housing bank talk about Nantucket being able to raise millions, millions, 50 million maybe even dollars for their housing issues. And we here on the island of the Vineyard can't even get a simple housing bank together to maybe start raising money. I agree, we should definitely try and look out towards our own West Tisburys and our locals here in town. But the housing crisis doesn't affect just the people here in West Tisbury. And I think we need to, again, reach out to Eggetown, Vineyard Haven, and try and bring all our housing committees together to try and work on solutions that's going to affect us all and help us all. Because, again, it affects us all right now. And if we take separate approaches, it's And if we take separate approaches, it's, it's not going to work. No one will, no one will succeed.
Thank you. Mr. Kleeman Smith. Again, this Tisbury resident, our West Tisbury resident has seen little evidence of strong proactive leadership in the sense of taking a bull by the horns. How will you proactively move the needle on the big issues that we face in West Tisbury? And your position on the formula for funding the high school repairs? You can start there.
Current formula for funding the high school. Even though it appears unfair, it's a base, I believe, on usage. And I, I, I kind of believe that that needs to remain the same. I don't see a better solution. It's, uh, equitable to all. As far as other issues in the town, affordable housing being one. Twenty million is what the town in Nantucket raises out of the town. Actually, the town itself pays out twenty million for affordable housing. I don't, that's a chunk of money. And I don't know how they managed to do that. But, um, I also know that their average median income requirements for affordable housing, I believe, is two hundred and ten or two hundred and forty percent of the, uh, average median income. But affordable housing is definitely on the top of my priority list. Since I was born on the island and raised in Egger Town, I remember as a child moving twice a year as my mom was part of the workforce. And her name was Luce. Her mom was a Mahi. And, uh, we still had to move twice a year. So it's a long, long history of difficult housing for island people. The other thing that I would be and have been an advocate for is emergency management as it coincides with climate change. The two go hand in hand for emergency preparedness. And I think that's where I first met Deborah. That's it.
Thank you. Next question, and we'll start with, uh, Mr. Lyons. What is your position on creating an island wide shared use path effort to create at least one continuous way to safely bicycle on the island like Nantucket has?
I, I think it's fantastic. I think, uh, I think there's, uh, our, 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 our complete streets committee, uh, has been working on something like that. They've been trying to tie in as many different parts to bike paths as possible. Uh, I think it's important for a few reasons. Young kids in West Tisbury schools shouldn't have to be riding on bike, on, on streets with, uh, with dump trucks and landscape trucks rolling right by them every morning. I think it'd be a lot safer if they had the bike paths. I, I understand that Old County Road is a, is a, a location where they're working on getting a SUP or a bike path put in. And there's been some pushback for fear of losing our rural charm and our, our rural characteristics. And I don't, I, I think we have to give a little to gain a lot. And we've been, over the course of the years and how our islands progressed, we, we've brought it on to us that we have lots of people come here over the course of the year now, not just the summer. But in the height of the summer with the traffic that goes on. I've seen many children riding on state road heading up to west, up to the center of West Tisbury when they can very easily go up Old County Road on a bike path. It's a much safer way. I think it needs to be looked at and addressed as, as much as possible.
Thank you. Mr. Klingon Smith, your position on creating an island wide shared use path effort to create at least one continuous way to safely bicycle on the island?
I think it's a great idea. I, I would love to and would support looking at a five year plan and how West Tisbury may be able to accomplish that. I think we have less mileage to do that in other towns. It definitely is a big safety factor. And there are more and more bicyclists coming. And I'd also like to see some more walkways, sidewalks coincide with those bike paths. I watch a family go by where I live now, speed limit's thirty-five, even though I I believe that a lot of vehicles like the big dump trucks, et cetera, going fifty miles an hour when they go by. And I watch a family of a, a mother and father and a, a child in a, in a baby carriage. Trying to go on the sidewalk across the street from here. And I would love to see that, uh, in other parts of the town.
Thank you. Ms. Miller, your position on creating an island wide shared use path effort to create, go ahead.
It's a great idea. I love it. And I also, like Chris. I know there's a lot there. We have this vision, this bucolic vision of our lovely town with its special roads and its big trees, which I am all for, but I also think we need to compromise, um, here and there to create these kinds of pa- spaces, both for our visiting community when they're renting bicycles or kids riding bikes to get to school. But also to help adults who want to reduce their fu- fuel use, give them an opportunity to ride their bikes to get places instead of driving cars. I myself would ride a bike to work if I felt like I could get there safely, but I'm too terrified to ride on the roads. And yeah, it just being able to walk, the idea of having kind of connectivity amongst the towns, I think is also great. Cause that would continue to allow people to use non fossil fuel based transportation to get to where they need to go.
Thank you. So now what we're going to do is a quick round of yes and no questions. And it's simple. I'll pose a question and then call on each of you for just an, either a yes or a no. And if you find that you want to elaborate, uh, on your answer, you'll have that opportunity in your final remarks. Okay, so we will start with you, Mr. Kleeman Smith, with the first yes, no question. Do you support urging, also known as pressuring Massachusetts DOT, Department of Transportation to renovate the North Tisbury Bridge that is unsafe at any speed? Yes, no?
I did not catch the beginning of that question.
Do you support urging or pressuring the Mass Department of Transportation to renovate the North Tisbury Bridge that is unsafe at any speed? Yes, no? Okay, Mr. Lyons? Ms. Miller? Okay. Next yes, no question. Do you want to pull out of the Up Island School District? Ms. Miller? Mr. Lyons? Mr. Kleeman Smith? Next yes, no question. Do you support the Preserve West Tisbury article on this year's annual town meeting warrant that would limit house sizes? Mr. Lyons? Ms. Miller? Ms. Clean, Mr. Kleeman Smith? Next yes, no question. Are you committed to helping West Tisbury do all we can to reduce fossil fuel use? Mr. Kleeman Smith? Mr. Lyons? Ms. Miller? And the last yes, no, and all three of you have actually addressed this already. But I'll give you an opportunity to be very clear on your position and then elaborate. Do you support the proposed housing bank article on this year's West Tisbury Annual Town Meeting Warrant? Mr. Lyons, yes, no? And would you like to elaborate?
I think it's a needed thing. I think all six towns need to get behind this because if we don't have housing for everybody who, who needs it that is here now, we're going to be lost in a, in a short amount of time. Um, so yes, I, I one hundred percent back the housing bank.
And again, the question is the warrant article. Not the idea of a housing bank and what it's to achieve, but the current
The, the current article as it, as it is written right now, yes.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Kleeman Smith. Do you support the proposed housing bank article on this year's West Tisbury Annual Town Meeting Warrant? A yes, no, and you can elaborate on your answer.
I still would like to see the legislation as it's written. Uh, because that's not what the warrant article is. And I also am a little reluctant to say yes. As, uh, I, I think it still needs some work, but we are in a crisis. So I think yes.
Thank you. Ms. Miller, do you support the proposed housing bank article on this year's West Tisbury Annual Town Meeting Warrant?
Yes. Um, and I, like Mr. Klingon Smith, I do have, I, yes, but with some caution. I think it would generate a massive fund of which we need to be able to take action. I'm not entirely clear on what that action would look like. I like the idea that a lot of the money would, would go towards redevelopment and repurpose, not new build. But it, the, the vehicle by which that is achieved is not entirely clear to me through the warrant as written right now. But yes, I do support the housing bill warrant.
Okay. Well, thank you. That, that was fun. I hope you all found that fun, the yes, no. Okay, back to. This is a question relative to the pandemic. What did we learn during the pandemic that in the future will ensure our Board of Health has the background, skills, support needed to partner with the executive branch, which is the select board? So governance can be more effective and West Tisbury residents have confidence in the public health messaging? I'll read it again, and I'm going to start with you, Mr. Lyons. What did we learn during the pandemic that in the future will ensure our Board of Health has the background, skills, support needed to partner with the executive branch, your select board? So governance can be more effective and West Tisbury residents have confidence in the public health messaging?
Well, I think we learned a lot of different things from, from COVID and the whole pandemic that, um, I think the first and foremost is that we, we learned that with, we learned that we weren't alone, that all six towns had to deal with the issue. At the same time, we had some medical and public health contacts through island healthcare. They, they helped steer us somewhat. Um, I think it would help more if our Board of Health uh, and, and the, the, the health inspector maybe had some more assistance with people. Who maybe had some more medical background or, uh, some more public health background. I think we learned a lot of incidental things about how our town was, uh, was, had the possibility of being cut off. Our, our whole island had a possibility of being cut off. Uh, I think we learned how new situations and, and new ways that became beneficial to the town. Outside seating became a very beneficial thing for restaurants. A farmer's market moving to the Ag Society where it had more, more room and more space for people. I think that was a huge, huge, uh, growing experience for the town. It took a lot of the traffic out of downtown West Tisbury on Saturdays and Wednesdays. I think that definitely helped. Uh, I think that moving forward, we need more collaboration between all the towns, I, 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 between all the health departments. I think it definitely is something that we had. Again, I think we need more of a medical or a public health advisory role.
Thank you. Mr. Kleeman Smith, and I'll read the question again. It is further lengthy. What did we learn during the pandemic that in the future will ensure our Board of Health has the background, skills, support needed to partner with the executive branch, the select board? So governance can be more effective and West Tisbury residents have confidence in the public health messaging?
I think so. West Tisbury, West Tisbury Board of Health and the health agents did a great job. And, uh, to improve on it, I think that we should take, I hope they were all get together and use emergency management more, work more closely with MEMA and FEMA. Uh, Mass Emergency Management Agency and the, uh, Federal Emergency Management Agency. My concern is supply and not just medical supplies, but, uh, food supply. Again, it's all preparedness thing. And, uh, back in, I think it was two thousand and seven. There was a bird flu scare and a lot of the principles that we learned then and the programs we put together were actually utilized during COVID nineteen and helped, uh, with this success. So I, I think we did pretty good, but there's always room for improvement.
Ms. Miller, I know this might be like looking in the mirror to answer the question, not to, so.
So I will tell you that when I ran for Board of Health and was elected, we didn't see a pandemic coming. There was no, other than knowing, my, of course, college age daughter said, Mom, of course, there's a pandemic every hundred years. Don't you know? Um, if I know, if I'd known, I probably would not have run cause it was very tricky waters for, for all of us. In terms of ensuring that the Board of Health, you know, we, when we were elected, we're not, you know, our qualifications. I certainly had no medical background. Mostly what the Board of Health looks towards is mostly what we deal with are wells and septic systems and food safety permits and hotel permits. The, you know, a pandemic is a big deal. The way I felt the Board of Health and the Select Board worked together, I felt was, was fairly strong. The Select Board looked to us on the Board of Health for our guidance and direction. And we looked to the state, we looked to state guidance and we looked to CDC because no one knew and no one still knows exactly what's happening. It's a continuing development. I have a lot of respect for how the Select Board managed meetings. And we had a few meetings that were all island, both boards together. They were big meetings and they were difficult. We had to make a lot of difficult choices that made a lot of people really unhappy, but in both directions. I felt supported by the Select Board. There were other committees in town that I did not feel supported by. They shall remain nameless, but it, the in terms of when, you know, the Board of Health and our levels of professionalism, we're not doctors. We're, we're, I would like to see more emphasis actually put on mental health and on food safety. And not, not as in food safety, like food handling, but in making sure people have access to food. But I, I, I was happy with how the two boards worked together and I hope the Select Board was happy with how we managed what we could manage when we knew what we knew, which changed all the time. So.
Okay. Thank you. Next question, and, and I am going to start with you, Ms. Miller. It is, the topic is the Mill Pond. And there are multi questions within this from this West Tisbury resident. What was decided in the studies? This was the studies done on the Mill Pond. What results from the studies have been done? Will the town need to decide what to do about the issue again? And what is your position?
So I'm not entirely sure of the beginning statements of that. What are you, they are asking what the science was?
What was decided in the studies?
So this issue was last, in my recollection, brought to town meeting quite a number of years ago. The studies that I, I went to some information sessions around this. And again, I'm, this has to have been ten years ago. This was brought up last when the issue of dredging the pond was proper. This was brought up last when the issue of dredging the pond was proper for the town. The studies, I went to some of the information sessions, there were conflicting. Opinions about the studies. My understanding about the pond is that the way the pond is now, and if it were to be dredged. It does not. Positively affect the herring run situation in the pond or connectivity of the Millbrook watershed. My background is in science and I am a nature lover, so my. Feeling about the Mill Pond is not to do anything drastic in any direction. I, my preference would be towards moving towards connectivity and allowing the population of the mill, the Millbrook. Um, the brook trout to regenerate and repopulate, and that would not involve keeping the Mill Pond active. I love the Mill Pond, it's beautiful. I think a filled in restored wetland would also be beautiful. And then we would start to be able to restore a fish population that once upon a time was a very important part of our food system here.
Thank you. Mr. Kleen and Smith, what is your position? Again, there are multiple questions within this. Uh, what was decided in the studies, again, done on the Mill Pond? What results from the studies have been done? Will the town need to decide what to do about the issue again? And what is your position?
And the first two parts, I have no idea. And the third part is to whether or not the town will have to deal with it again, most likely. And uh, also the building down there is. Uh, next to the househouse, it's last public building in town, not be uh, brought up to speed. Uh, cold wise. Kent Healy, who see is the one that's open. Could have answered this question probably a lot better than I. It's it's something that I'll have to learn more about.
Mr. Lyons. The Mill Pond. What was decided in the studies? What results from the studies have been done? Will the town need to decide what to do with the issue again? And what is your position?
Well, as far as what was decided in the studies, I believe it was decided to, again, as Jess said, I believe this is a while back. Uh, but the was decided, I believe, was to just let it nature take its course, which was to let it fill back in. Um, and the results were, they let it fill back in. Um, I know that Kent. Was a great, great town uh, voice in letting it go back to its natural state. Is the town gonna have to deal with it again? Possibly. Um, my position on it is to let it go back to its natural state. I think that. The wetlands are probably a much better way to do it. If if we're constantly trying to push a wet noodle up a hill. It 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 doesn't work, so. By letting it go to its natural state and how it wants to work, I think we we should probably go with that and. And hopefully, as Jess said, the 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 trout life will come back and and things will still move forward with. The least amount of human effect to it.
Thank you. Well, that actually wraps up uh, almost all of the questions that that the League received. Uh, to pose to you candidates this evening. So now, as we begin to have the final remarks. From each of you uh, would would like to have each of you start. Um, by answering this question. What issues here in West Tisbury keep you awake at night? Answering that, using that as a segue then to make your final remarks and we'll. Have Mr. Lyons start.
What issues keep me up at night?
What what West is very issues, what issues there in West Tisbury keep you up awake at night?
Um, well. I I I I think that's kind of a. It's tough one, kind of, because I I have insomnia. I. I think, yeah, I'm very concerned about the housing situation. Um, and not just the housing, the affordable housing and low income housing. I think we also have to look at the housing as far as um, our elderly. I think that's a really big question because we do have that. Growing elderly population, and I think that's important. Um, another big issue that really keeps me up a lot is the is the climate change itself. I I think. Yeah, everything's changing in 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 our world today and our climate is changing and we get affected by it, whether we want to know it or not and want to accept it or not. I want to circle back one quick bit about the Housing Bank. We you you mentioned about the the warrant that was on there. Um, I said, yes, I do support it as it stands. Um, I do, I do know through reading it that. Uh, once the um, the Advisory Board is is commissioned. I think anything that they do has to go through votes through the town is is what I believe I read. So I don't think they will have just free rein to do whatever they want, whenever they want. So I think we still. As a town have some control over that. Um, and as far as my final comments go. I believe I bring to the table some new eyes and a more practical and honest concepts to help. Move this town forward in our day, in this day and age. Our town is changing in some ways we've never seen before. The contamination of the ponds with the PFAS and with allergies and and the the cyanoc. Uh, the eroding shorelines, unheard of traffic problems. And there are other ways that have been around for years and we've never properly addressed. Uh, the housing crisis, the school funding issues. And the simple things like the uncontrolled dogs and beach access. I feel that. If I'm elected, I intend to try and help move our town forward in these and face these changing times positively. While keeping up the rural integrity and the small town feeling of this place that we all love and we call West Tisbury. West is. Um, thank you, thank you for your time. Thank you for listening. Thank you to everybody who is uh, put their questions out there for the three of us to ask. And uh, I wish the best to all three of us.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. And again, starting your your final remark with answering the question, what issues here in West Tisbury? Keep you awake at night? A segue to your final remarks.
As as a serving member of the Board of Health, of course, COVID kept me awake a lot. I worry about my community. I worry about. My friends and coworkers who don't know where they're gonna move to next. Um, I worry about. My elderly friends who, you know, one of them starts to fail and they. Even if they'll, even if help is available, they might be too proud to take, to ask for the help, so. You know, the quiet community members just have to kind of sneak up and take, help them without it being a big deal and um. What else do I worry about? I worry about people being taxed out of their homes. I worry about the way what COVID, you know, we were already. On a certain course with the development of our real estate and our pricing of our real estate. COVID has sent that into orbit much more quickly. Um, as properties sell for these massive amounts, they become comparable properties for our tax assessments. And families find themselves in situations where they can't afford to keep their homes, even if they own their homes, they can't afford the taxes. And I I feel like that is something we need to somehow address. Those are the main things that keep me up. I think a lot about. Because I'm a food person, I think about our food independence on the island, especially with climate change. As supplies become and and global change, um, as supplies become more complicated. How do we make sure that we we all have what we need to live? Basic needs, not. Cable and not fancier cars, but basic needs. That's pretty much what keeps me up at night. And then and then the increasing winds, I don't, I'm sure everyone has been feeling the direct effects of climate change and. Temperature shift, temperature shifts. Uh, one other thing, Lyme disease keeps me up at night. I think a lot about ticks. And I see that as quite a big and alpha gal. Again, that's an environmental issue. How can we manage and mitigate the tick population? To help with health, you know, COVID is one thing and and tick borne illness is another. That's mostly what keeps me up and then thinking about what, how is all that food gonna get put out the next day at school? How are we gonna do that? I'm not sure. We have very limited amount of time. So those are my main closing remarks. I also want to thank you guys for hosting us. And hopefully, if we get to do this again, it'll be in the library again next year, maybe. And. Yeah, and no whining dog in the background. Um, and also to Mr. Kling and Smith and to Chris Lyons for. All of us stepping up. I like, I like that in this town, we're getting a little showing. I guess that that my actual final closing remark is. I would like to see more of my generation stepping up to participate in our town government. And part of why I am doing this is to kind of help lead the way to set the example of, you know what, you can work full time. You can have a family and you can contribute to your to your town. Um, you meet each day with a way of having a positive or negative effect on the world around you. This is just another level of being able to serve. And it can be any board in any way. And so I'd just like to encourage people to step up, volunteer, show up. It's how you make things happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kleen and Smith. As you begin your final remarks, if you will start by answering the question. What issues here in West Tisbury keep you awake at night? Using that as a segue for your final remarks.
Not to be funny, last night at about one thirty, two o'clock in the morning. A motorcycle with very loud, loud exhaust went by this house at an extreme high rate of speed. That keeps me up at night. And then the deer that get run over outside this house, also because of people driving at a high rate of speed. When they hit that deer with their motor vehicle, that keeps me up at night. Other than that, not much keeps me up at night. But as soon as I get up in the morning, that's a different story. Because as soon as I get up and I get my first cup of coffee, I start to think about the housing situation. I start to think about how are we gonna keep? West Tisbury rural agricultural community. It's tough, you know, when people are building hotels as summer homes. And and it's uh, I just. I I saw something the other day, I think it was in the Boston Globe, maybe the Massachusetts Commission said something about it, but the. The island being at its capacity for the infrastructure that we have. And and that's why I I think. The idea of taking buildings that are already there and turn turning them into affordable housing is definitely a good. Good avenue to travel down. I also would like to say that uh, I hope that. The voters in West Tisbury will be able to. Whoever, whichever one of us wins the election, I hope that the community will. Be able to approach us and and it will be able to listen to their their concerns and their needs and wants. And try to implement it somehow, or at least work on it. Last thing I'm gonna say is thank you very much, Deborah, and for the League of Women Voters. And I'm gonna say something that my fellow candidates didn't say, and that is, I'm asking for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. And if we were live, this would be the time where we would all be clapping our hands. Saying thank you to the candidates. And with that, uh. We're winding down our time together this evening. The League would like to thank MVTV, our own cable television station here on the Vineyard. Lucy Morrison, who is, has been coordinating the virtual gathering that we can. Provide this live live broadcast on MVTV on channel fifteen. It can also be streamed for later viewing on MVTV between now and your election day. I would also like to thank my lead colleague, Christie Straylor, who coordinated the evening's candidate forum. In communication with the three of you. Lastly, uh, we would like to remind you of two upcoming important dates. Your annual meeting on Tuesday, April twelve at six P M. It's early this year at the West Tisbury School. And your town elections two days later on April fourteenth. Your polls will be open from seven A M to eight P M. And it, they will be at the Public Services Building. Absentee ballots are available on the West Tisbury website or at your town clerk's office. Also, you will have three ballot questions. On your ballot this year. The first one is a non-binding public advisory question calling on the owner of the Pilgrim Nuclear Power Station. To immediately withdraw any plans to discharge any radioactive water in Cape Cod Bay. Your second is authorizing monies and the figures will be in the ballot to cover cost of renovations to the househouse. And then the third ballot question will be authorizing West Tisbury to petition the legislature. For a special act establishing a housing bank. And of course, will also include further points outlined in the ballot question. Lastly, I would like to thank the candidates for their interest in running for. Public office and serving. And to the voters, thank you for exercising your right and privilege to vote on election day. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Martha's Vineyard, again, thank you for your participation, both here, virtually and at home. Good night.